Thank you. Good afternoon. It's the fourteenth of July 2022 and this is the special council meeting. The time is one fifty-eight and in attendance are myself, Council Island, councillor Tay, councillor Doyle, councillor Fechner, councillor Mulligan and councillor Cornsman. Councillor Cornsman, would you like to lead us into the acknowledge it to country?
Epsom City Council acknowledges the traditional custodians of the land on which we are gathered, acknowledging our gratitude that we share this land today but also acknowledging the cost of that sharing and the hope that we can move to a place of justice and partnership together and that we welcome opportunities for future engagement.
Thank you, councillor Cornsman. Councillor Ireland, would you like to lead us into prayer?
Thank you, Mayor. Heavenly Father, we seek you to be with us in this meeting today. Assist us to be an example to others, bringing strength and encouragement in whatever we do and equip us for the ongoing challenges as they arise. Give the guidance to continue to make wise decisions for both the short and long term benefit of our city and our community. Regardless of how difficult and unpopular some will be, we ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, councillor Ireland. We have two apologies, one from the deputy mayor, councillor Madison, and from councillor Johnic, and they're both seeking leave of absence. I'll move that leave of absence of both the deputy mayor and councillor Johnic. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Ireland. I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour? I think it's unanimous in the room. Are there any declarations of interest in the matters on the agenda?
Thank you, Mayor, if I may. In accordance with section one hundred and fifty EQ of the Local Government Act of two thousand and nine, I councillor Andrew Fechner inform the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in the following matters relating to the Nicholas Street precinct: approval of agreement for lease for the following tenancies: Metro B, two B zero four, Metro B tenancy two B zero five, each tenancy T three, Metro B tenancy two B one one, Metro B tenancy two B one four. The nature of the declarable conflict of interest are my business interests in both A1A Proprietary Limited and Bahaz and Boke Proprietary Limited, both located in the top of town in Ipswich. I plan on dealing with this conflict by leaving the room while the matters are discussed and voted on.
Thank you very much, councillor Fechner. Are there any other declarations of interest? Now in that case, we will move on to item six point one. As we're going to ask some questions on a commercial nature, I'm going to move that in accordance with section two five four J three G, that we move into closed session for negotiations relating to a commercial matter involving the local government for which a public discussion would likely prejudice the interests of the local government. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Doyle. I'll put that matter to the vote. Those in favour? It's unanimous and carried. We'll go into closed session.
Please let me know when we're in open.
Thank you very much. Welcome back to the special council meeting for the 14th of July. It's 2:37pm and we're at item 6.1. We've just had a close, come out a closed session and a discussion on the five tenancies here. So I move on to item 6.1 which is the Nicholas Street Precinct approval of an agreement for lease for Metro B tenancy 2B04. I propose that we move A through to E in batch. Do I have, I'll move that. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Doyle. Would anyone like to speak, sorry, anyone like to speak to the council officer on this? No, I'll now open up any discussion.
May?
Yeah, thank you, please councillor.
I just want to make some general observations about this. I think this is quite an exciting day in the redevelopment of our CBD. And if I've just got the opportunity over the next couple of minutes to, to look at the history of this, where the council bought the CPD or most of the CBD or a lot of the CBD for just over $50 million. And to see five major tenancies, which will certainly be welcomed by our community, to me is a major milestone, along with other milestones, obviously, through the, you know, the, the time of the project. It was said to me at the time, by CEOs, that this was a development that would be some 15 to 20 years in the making to rejuvenate, revive our CBD without any plan to have no ultimate cost to the rate parts of the city. And I know some people see the Nicholas Street precinct and Riverlink as rivals. I like to think of them as siblings where, and even though there's sometimes some sibling rivalry, I think it's something that both sides of the river need to embrace to, to ensure that we maximise on both sides the number of people utilising the facilities on both sides because they are different. And one thing that's near and dear to me is the night time trade in the, in this area here. I think that's particularly important. Daytime trade is increasing all the time, but it's night time trade, getting people, I've said this previously, getting people to come from near and far into the CBD for the food and the entertainment in the night time. That, that's, that's the thing that is the real sweetener to make it the place to be in our, in our community, rather than people necessarily heading to the western suburbs of Brisbane. I think it's an opportunity that, you know, that we, we must embrace at all times. I recall the opening of the mall here in 1987, that was following the Reed's fire and the redevelopment. And when the mall area was closed off at the end, as people know, because at the end of the mall where Woolworths were, and you couldn't see through to the, the river, you couldn't see through to the railway workshops, that, that of course is now changed and the appearance of that whole area. I think any city in Australia, or indeed the world, would be proud to, to have a CBD that's attractive and will be embraced by our community. And, and I know councillor Doyle, and I've gone through some of these iterations in the past, and I know you probably have some sleepless nights, thinking about what's happening and leases and development and how it's going to proceed. So I just sort of place on the record to you and to your committee, you know, what's been achieved today. I know there's a lot more to happen, and that will be over a number of years. And it was always intended to be over a number of years. But I know behind these five items is a lot more than a couple of lines on a council agenda. So if I could just pass my thanks personally to you and to your committee for, for what you've achieved in a relatively short period of time.
Thank you councillor Tully.
Thank you councillor Tully. I really appreciate the feedback and the compliment.
But, but behind the Nicholas Street precinct team is a well-oiled machine of subject matter experts and dedicated staff. So without them, we wouldn't be here today. It almost seems as if this project was going to have everything thrown at it from the very start. Who would have thought at the end of our journey, they throw in Covid as we try and, you know, achieve some really good, you know, results for our city. Anyway, I'm, I'm just delighted and for the record, I appreciate all our chats and your, your, your background and your insights. You know, it's not lost on me, including the trip to Pasadena and so, so what is very important about opening up the street down Nicholas Street. You know, certainly in these early days, when we need the footfall, the traffic, the foot traffic, we also are relying on that vehicular traffic. So there will be a couple of spaces where, where cars can pull up and you can go and get something to eat or drink. Equally, the Uber drivers can pull up. So that's a key feature. That's always been in place. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I'll put item 6.1 to, to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. We now move on to item 6.2, which is the Nicholas Street precinct approval of an agreement for lease for Metro B tenancy 2B05. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer? No? In that case, I will move recommendations A through to E. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Mulligan. Any discussion on the matter? No? In that case, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Move on to item 6.3, which is the Nicholas Street precinct approval of an agreement for lease for Eats tenancy T3. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer? No? I'll move recommendations A through to E together. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Kunselman. Any discussion? No? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Move on to item 6.4, Nicholas Street precinct approval for, of an agreement for a lease for Metro B tenancy 2B11. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer? No? I'll move the, the recommendations A through to E are moved together. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Doyle. Is there any discussion? I'll put the matter We'll now move on to item 6.5, which is the Nicholas Street Precinct approval of an agreement for lease for Metro B Tendency 2B14. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer on this? No? In that case, I'll move recommendations A through to E together. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Doyle. Any discussion? In that case, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. In closing, it's wonderful what we can all do working together. Very pleased with today. And I'll close the meeting. Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry. My apologies. The minute secretary's got your back. Thank you very much. Welcome back. That's lovely. As I say, it's lovely. We're all working together. What a great outcome we're having. I'll close the meeting at 2:45pm. Thank you.